Okay, it is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At or around 9:00, shortly after 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act. Opening today with a prayer. Would you please? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy, the freedoms that are ours, that are so valuable to us. Thank you for the very many safeties that we enjoy from the first responders, from the military, from the police, from our folks in law enforcement. Look after them, keep them safe, especially during this very severe winter weather that we are experiencing. Look after the safety of the many holiday travelers that will be hitting the roads today and through the rest of the week through the storm. Look after our group today as we deliberate on the proceedings, the issues before the county. Guide us in our thoughts and our actions. These things we ask in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Next item is approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissars' meeting held on December 18, 2023.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think about this for a minute.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunswick.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item is to consider the following. First would be claims and treasurer's receipts.
Chairman, I would move to accept the claims, approve them, as well as the treasurer's receipts as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I happen to notice on the revenue side, the incorporation lieu of taxes, it looks like there's a negative balance for the amount we received here a week or two ago. Does that look to be correct? Am I misreading that? I see a negative $138,331.52, that makes a total of zero, which, if my memory serves me right, that was about that much in lieu of taxes we received.
Yeah, and that was just on last week's claims.
If we have the treasurer here next, I'll ask her about that, but that's a question that I had. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Please.
Aye.
Brunswick.
Aye.
Next is, next item is receive and order filed fee reports submitted by the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we receive an order filed, the certificates, I'm sorry, where am I at here? Oh, receive and order the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff. In the amount of $2,384.80, and the second one in the amount of $5,173.66.
And I think there's a third.
I only have two.
Two, just two. Did you get the original? Is it red on the bottom?
I think you must have.
Oh, this is the original.
He's got the original.
It's like, okay.
Where did it go?
I figured it'd turn up, so.
So you have the original.
I guess we only have two.
Oh, I should, yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
There's a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunswick.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
I figured it'd turn up. It's like, I know there was two there.
That happens sometimes.
I figured it got stuck to somebody's coffee.
Good thing Jerry had it, because I thought I had it on my.
Stamped in red, that's usually the original.
So there's two stamped in red.
Yeah, I redid them.
With the same amount, so just get rid of one?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can probably tell which one has, I think I had copies crossed out on the top.
Yeah, okay. There you go. We should be good to go.
It should continue to go down on that tree line. Becky, the two, Glenn.
And Jerry? Well, they probably just haven't made it in to sign theirs yet. You guys, Jared will need to sign some stamps on here.
Are those for Barry and Jerry?
Mm-hmm.
They do that another time, or after they do theirs, or?
They can sign, yeah, they can sign later. But you go ahead and sign, since Danny didn't.
That's the end of Thursday.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, yeah. They're from the treasurer's office. Or the assessor's office.
Okay, it is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on December 18, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve those minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting we held on December 18 of 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
All right. Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. And Pat, the deputy county assessor says none. Thank you. Is there anything, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? At 9:16, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Looks like I have an emergency call I need to take.
The assessor stuff, we'll never forget. You know, remember? She was the assessor forever, and then she took the state job.
Metal crafters.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
She must have stayed a long time.
Yes, she was. Take coffee out of metal, I said, no, I do whatever I want. I don't smell very good.
They had a lot of good changes. Somebody might be standing up snowing earlier than that.
My phone was pretty active this morning.
What's the name of that thrift store that she took baby?
Um, Sea Herrestic.
Sea Herrestic. Your Christmas company go home in the storm and stay?
They're here through New Year's. So, the girls, they're gonna take her there during the morning. I drove.
Oh, fun.
Probably here back.
When's this storm started? I was in a heavy town.
Yeah, this building, that's your impact. It looks like once you get over all the things that are pretty.
I didn't even leave my front door yesterday. I said, no.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Jason.
Did you realize it snowed? Yeah. You've heard about it?
Depending on the road, the wind actually made all the snow go somewhere else in some cases, not all cases.
It's all between my front door and my barn. There's nothing out on the road.
Other cases, it's all on the road, not in the meadows.
Well, Hodges is elevated enough to clean all the way from my house to the highway. Yeah. And that used, you could never go down that road before, in the winter, when you got one of these. Right toward the highway, you would never get it on the highway.
Okay, it is 9:20. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign the interlocal agreement with Southern Public School District Number 55 to correct a typo. And Becky, Tyler, maybe you can fill me in on this one.
Yeah, it's a little.
It's highlighted right there.
Yeah, a little error that I left in the template that I used. The school district was too kind enough to drive all the way over here and point it out to me. These things happen from time to time. We have a covering attorney, like the city, they can give a twenty-four, but their attorney can't do it. So what I would be asking you to do with your chairman is just change that by interlineation, scratch out where it says village, right, and district, where your initials is.
District?
Yes. Whatever my term of art throughout that is.
It's district.
District?
Yes, sir.
With the capital D?
Yes.
Want a motion, chairman?
I should probably have one of those, so.
I would move to authorize you, as chairman, to amend the interlocal agreement with Southern Public School District Number 55 to correct the typo in question.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Does the attorney get a cut in pay on that, or what? Bad idea. Sorry.
He's exempt.
Bad idea. And it's just one location?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Brunswick.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
I didn't know it was going to be here, so I needed to make at least one mistake.
Only one.
We have, you have to initial it.
I'll.
Are you gonna do it?
Uh, I'll have to initial it.
Oh, I have to initial it. That's right, you told me that, and I.
He did have that as part of his instructions.
They'll just send it back to school, and they'll do by choice. We won't have a separate, we won't have a separate paper or another.
There we go. I just wanted to make sure you were gonna be able to make it for your liquor license area. Yep, yep. Okay, that's fine. I was just wanting to make sure whether I didn't hold you up, so, thank you, my. Yeah, you too, bye.
That was our 9:40, I take it? You're gonna come in?
Yeah, that's why I came. I'm just taking an employee to work, and then I'm gonna be here.
Good to see you.
Everybody else that sits on that board likes to pick on him. All the other board members pick on him. He handles it very well. He handles it very well.
He has a lot of different sizes up there.
Wait a second. How can we ever pass you through?
Putting that one on.
Was it for 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Jason, all your crew made it to their machines this morning?
Yes.
Nobody got snowed out? Snowed in?
I think some of them probably even worked over the holiday.
Yeah, they did. They're now.
They could get back in and go. That was pretty awesome. I can't remember his last name.
Yeah, that was pretty neat. We're pretty proud.
You bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty nice. Nice to see it.
Yeah, we made the trip down, so.
It was nice to have a positive outcome in that, those kind of situations.
Yeah, for sure.
That's what's even better. Probably more so for them, too. At least at heaven, not be a positive. That was my fault. I got a little. It is 9:30. Next agenda item is to discuss and consider acceptance of bid for Lincoln County Department of Roads 2023-02 Asphalt Overlay Projects.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. So after review of all the bids received, I do have a letter here from TC Engineering to, I guess I'll pass it around. I didn't bring copies, but you guys won't look at that. But they did their review and didn't find any discrepancies. And after our review, recommend the approval of the low bidder of Western Engineering Company for the amount of $1,550,314.40.
And it's my understanding that they did agree on the completion date of June 50, correct?
Yep, correct.
This is for milling and for asphalt overlay.
Yep.
Jason, that fits into the budgeted amount that we had in there?
Yeah, we, we have actually some extra funds there. Yeah, to be able to hopefully take care of some other needs this year as well, so.
Okay, this is milling of 240,877.40. Asphalt, 15,138 tons for $1,300,437. For a total of $1,550,314.40.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the bid for the Lincoln County Department of Roads 2023-02 Asphalt Overlay Project in the amount of $1,550,314.40 to Western Engineering. Is that correct?
Correct.
Check it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Excuse me.
I'd like to see something under budget.
Yes.
Pleasant surprise.
Very nice.
They've, they've been really good partners to Lincoln County for a long time. And Jason, thanks for you and Brian and all your hard work on this. I know you guys went through that with a fine tooth comb.
No, and I do, I just want to thank the other bidders as well, so.
It was nice to have multiple bidders, wasn't it?
Yep, it was. And they were very competitive as well, so.
Jason, was it in fact under budget?
Yes. Actually, all three of them were under our projection, so.
That's good.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Uldy.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
We're not gonna start tomorrow probably, though, right?
No, no.
Asphalt wouldn't sit real long. We wouldn't like the job.
Uh, one more thing if we could, though. Sorry, I should have been thinking.
No, no problem.
The snowfall that was on the North River Road, Hershey to Sutherland, any problems occur in this snowstorm on that, that?
Well, South River Road was where we were at, actually, when I spoke to you earlier. But yeah, there's numerous places around the county, especially you get out on the rural gravel roads. It's very difficult conditions right now. So, snowdrifts that are impassable and we're trying to, pretty much at this point, we're not opening up all the roads right now. We're more or less opening up roads to get to people that are stranded and get people out of there. And they're blowing back in shut about as quick as we open them, so. Right now, yeah, hopefully everybody will stay home and stay off those roads. And we're trying to keep our major routes open, but it's, it's very difficult.
Now, if there would happen to be an emergency north of Sutherland, is there some way that the emergency first responders are in communication with your folks up there?
Oh, pertaining to that one, sorry. I guess I missed your.
No, that was the one that I wanted.
Your intent.
Yeah, that one, inundation.
We, they are prioritizing that route and they're keeping that one open and passable, so.
Good, good.
Yep.
Good, super, okay. Be sure and thank the individuals that put forth that effort for us, because we certainly do appreciate it.
I will, yeah. They've been working long and hard the last, well, this is day three now of this storm, so, yep, I'll do that.
Jason, just, just as a piece of information for the rest of the board, myself included, it'd be nice to have a report on your priority list as snow comes out, you know, sometime, you know, we catch the railroad, you know, on front and some of the other things and sort of how we go down. And so, as a board can understand what, what happens here, so.
Oh, okay.
Some later time, whatever, you know. Thank you. And it would be better on that report if they just put Far North Road or something rather than by names.
Actually, they don't need to bother with my road, because I can get out on Hodges Road, so. We're not in distress at all.
Interesting.
Plus, I have a bi-directional new Holland tractor I can get my, I can get out if I need to get out.
Probably.
They don't need to bother coming down our road.
30 years ago, that was not necessarily the case. No, an individual that was on the board that.
Yeah, wanted out first.
Nice road.
One of those. No, we don't need any help. They've got plenty of stuff to do other places. We're good. That road, it's about to leave it shut until this is done, because I've lived on it for 40 some years and it will blow right back shut anyway, so there's no, no point.
Yeah, with the wind today, it's pretty good.
When's the wind forecast to go down?
In the east of the highway there.
Not till tomorrow?
Now it goes down to what, 39 or 32 or something?
I had a case tractor plow me out this morning.
Gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want you to know I showed the respect.
Oh. Joe's looking for brownie points, apparently.
I am. I'm gonna take them wherever I can get them, so.
You got up like you were expecting him to cuff you up or something.
That's kind of weird.
Tyler, Victoria Steffen, is she out on her own or do you know who she works for there?
Um, not familiar with her. Yeah, just first time I remember seeing the name and I'd have to be a mess. Shows it is a, what, address. Steffen. Okay, it is 9:40. Our next agenda item is a public hearing on the Class 1 Liquor License Application submitted by Cork and Cap LLC doing business as CNC Catering at Harbor Lights located at 711 East North Lake Road, North Platte, Nebraska. Sir?
Sir.
Would you please come forward, state your name, and sign in for us and tell us what we are considering before us?
My name is Mike Shore. I'm with CNC Catering, North Platte, Nebraska.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Is this a new license?
Yes, this is a public. He has multiple licenses. This is a new one for this location. And it will be a public hearing, too, because it's for a new, a new location.
I think we met a year ago. We did, we did this for the county fair. We also have one at the 304 venue downtown. What we're looking at doing is putting in a liquor license, a permanent license there for any events that take place out there. We would provide alcohol and whatever type of services needed for weddings, parties, fundraisers, stuff like that.
At, at Harbor Lights?
Yes, sir.
This just prevents you from having to come in and do this for every event?
Correct.
That's out there?
And what it does, you know, I, I think that, you know, Alan Hirschfeld, local businessman, owns both the 304 and the Harbor Lights. And I think we were just trying to, once he, we, we did have the relationship with the 304 venue and what's going on there, I think we just had to get outside of what they had guaranteed people for, you know, it was already preset weddings or about that far out, I think, people. And so, they just had to get outside that point. So, we're, we're looking towards April would be our first event that was out there. But they've had some issues as well out there with, you know, different things happening. So, we think that's gonna clean it up on his side. You know, obviously, on my side, I'm in it to, to turn a slight profit.
And you, you are familiar with the facility out there?
Correct.
Back doors, side doors and all that?
Yep. We met with the fire marshal out there on Friday.
So, next item is then to open the public hearing. Motion is open that?
No, you're the man.
I'll open the public hearing at 9:42. I would invite any comments in regards to Class 1 Liquor License Application submitted by Cork and Cap LLC doing business as CNC Catering at Harbor Lights located at 711 East North Lake Road, North Platte, Nebraska. This public hearing is open. We will accept comments.
Chairman, you might make a note. We have a completed application before us.
Yeah, we have a very completed application here and we have the license number in front of us. We also have a detailed list of other licenses that Mr. Shore has and has, to the best of my knowledge, a clean track record. Would that be true, Sheriff?
No, that's who he has, to the best of my knowledge.
I was talking about the liquor.
Oh, yeah. Mike, does this give you exclusive out there?
Yes.
So, that'll be better for us, because we've got one outfit to deal with. As you know, we bring a number of these before the border every year. People want that special designated permits out there, so now we'll have Mike to deal with all the time, so it's, we know who we're dealing with and we know what our reputation is. It's gotta be better for everybody.
For those that didn't hear, that was Sheriff Jerome Kramer that made a positive comment in regards to just having one entity to deal with, with events at that particular location, which streamlines things and makes it much easier to deal with. Public hearing is open. Any other comments? Any other comments in regards to Class 1 Liquor License Application submitted by Cork and Cap LLC doing business as CNC Catering at Harbor Lights?
Need to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, just a, you, you mentioned some issues prior, Mike, what?
Just, you know, the problem you have on those events out there is it's in the middle of nowhere and they, you have a wedding and everybody's. of nowhere, and they, you have a wedding, and everybody's been to a wedding, and people show up there, and it is all alcohol in from everywhere, and there's nobody in charge of it, you know, you got...
That's what you're talking about.
The bride and groom, so, we're, we're actually, we will have, we have bartenders on staff that will be there and help control, you know, not only taking care of the building, but, you know, people being over served, or...
Things of that nature.
Yes.
That explains that, thank you.
That's what, that's, you know, I think that's what I sell to these, these guys on the fact that we're, you know, not necessarily a babysitter, but we try to control what's going on, we do control what's going on.
Right, and...
You know, we had one, this year we shut down at the fairgrounds, I think, two hours early because of what was going on, so it's, we are, you know, doing our best to try to help.
I recollect, I recall that conversation about the fairgrounds.
Right.
So that's good to know, and that's, it seems to me that would be a positive
Right.
impact on this facility.
And on Mr. Shore's liquor license.
Right.
You have a lot at stake here, and that's...
Right.
I think that's what Sheriff was alluding to, it's nice to have someone that has that much vested interest in that, to make sure that things do run properly, and we appreciate you from here.
And I think it also helps the people who are booking the venue
Right.
to know that they have somebody who is experienced
Right.
and dependable, and, and so it's a good partnership.
It's still a two-part.
No, just kidding.
And we're, you know, and we're just not trying to take control of it, so we, we're still giving fair price, you know, the, when they're doing the different things that they're trying to do, we're not just out there trying to, we're still making a fair price, we, we offer, you know, a lot of different opportunities for them to do different things that way, so.
Yeah, you're not only at risk one time, eight times, you have eight different licenses.
Right.
That does put a lot of skin in the game.
And you send another one in for Sullivan, so.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Did we vote on that yet?
No.
Brunz.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Uglie.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the, we will close the public hearing at nine forty-seven. Next item is to consider a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Chairman, I would move to approve a positive recommendation for the approval of this liquor licensing question by Cork and Cap LLC, DBA, SCC, CNC Catering at Harbor Lights, located at 711 East North Lake Road. Recommendation to the commission for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Woolen.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Uglie.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
Morning, Brandon.
Good morning.
Okay, it is nine fifty. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission on the application of a Class D liquor license submitted by Fast Stop 1155 Inc. at 381 North Highway 25, Sutherland, Nebraska. And we did have the public hearing last week, had no negative comments, other than we didn't think that the application was complete, but it is, correct?
It was complete, they just do not normally send that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was the one that asked, we tabled out the missing piece of paperwork, which we did receive that same day, if you'd entertain a motion, I'd be glad to make one at this time.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, or a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission, Nebraska, positive recommendation for the application for a Class D liquor license submitted by Fast Stop 1155 Inc. at 381 North Highway 25, Sutherland, Nebraska.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
And I think authorize you to sign, I believe, if there's a place for your signature.
No.
Oh, there's not, oh, okay.
Okay, super. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Uglie.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Gets, gets that stiffer, it moves down the wall. Building, usually, hard work on it.
Oh. Somehow trying to make that concrete.
The reason I use that term is because, as a kid, we used to have to sweep all the purlins, so it was a hundred fifty-foot building, and we'd put ween in it, like, had to crawl with my hand, but that hand broom's from...
Any more claims?
Yes.
Clean all that off. Very many. Well, you're nice and tidy, you've got those all squared away. Did you do that, or did Tyler do it for you?
I did it. Contrary to belief, Tyler doesn't do a whole lot for me.
What's he be, that I'm not folding my sheets just a certain way, or should I have my shoes?
Put you on report. Trying to snow. Just wanna give up on it. Not tomorrow. Did it bill you field that, the big ticket item there?
No, it's just their share of the, in, you know, the, watching that's, it comes into the county, there's a transfer from the county to them.
I saw the notation for backstop, that's what it was.
Don't know about that.
I thought it was a project.
No, I don't think so.
Just a revenue. Should've been here for him out. We're pretty close to it. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Those guys?
It would appear, yes.
I think that's you.
Unless, unless I accidentally got some in my file, I always check.
Since you're up next, Mr. Emergency Manager, I'm gonna ask you a question about, have you heard anything in regards to interstate closings?
It's open.
How are the roads, have you heard?
Um, been out on, on part of ours, they're pretty good.
Interstate?
Yeah. Uh, I know, especially yesterday, they pulled trucks from the north, so pretty much weren't touching the highways, for the most part, just to make sure that they kept the interstate open.
Most of the storm was east of us instead of west, is that correct?
No, well, it started in the east, went north, rotated around, and when it came down, it kinda moved and shifted west again a little bit, because overall, it got more snow than we did.
Really? That wasn't the case initially, initially, was it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, it is ten AM, next agenda item is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a contract with Cleary Building Corp. for Region 51 Emergency Management Storage Building.
All right, I'll start. I have been in discussion with Gavin Field over Cleary over the past few weeks, I had sent him the additions to the contract, the standard terms that we tuck in all of ours, our insurance coverage, statutory required bonding, things like that, they sent that up to corporate, it passed muster, they're agreeable to sign that, he's supposed to be working on doing that. I have reviewed Cleary's half of the contract, interesting read, hopefully all the specs are right, I'll leave that up for you five fine people, legally speaking, it's about as good as it's gonna get, I don't see anything in it that causes me real great concern, I just don't think it's probably worth trying to amend little technical things, so, with that, it's kind of on you folks, I will note for you, Mr. Chairman, their part of it is signed digitally, it's an e-signature through, I believe, Dreammaker or DreamWorks, they have some kind of program, I will get with Gavin about how to get you to actually sign their part.
Great. We have a contract in front of us?
Yes.
And when is the construction to begin? Stated time and completion?
I don't recall there's a stated time or not, I can't imagine they're gonna get started very last.
It's January, but it's tentative.
Yeah.
It's, obviously with weather, that's probably not gonna happen, Chairman, the, Brandon, you've gone through the specs on this ad nauseam, correct?
Uh-huh.
You've gone through the specs multiple times, and everything that we basically want for the, the structure is in place, the insulation and so forth, and the door height and all those things, we've recapped all that, and then Commissioner Wheeler and I've talked to, also conversed with the building and grounds that's gonna assist in the, in the foundation work, when it comes to that, closer to spring probably, and we'll rate that floor drain that is required for being able to wash equipment down and that type thing, Brandon, and I know Brandon and Booker have been talking as well, making sure we don't leave a gap in there, and we'll also, we've discussed the need to stub in the conduit for the next phase, which will be a, probably a 200 amp panel for basic electric service there, but that'll be, that'll be another call in the work, but we've got, we've got some pretty substantial room in there for that portion, and the concrete portion is in this bid, so that's...
The concrete, it's gonna be in the next question.
It is in this.
Is it in here?
It's there.
On page two, at the bottom, it says, "Foundation, concrete floors supplied by the purchaser."
The original language that I saw included that as a sub, is that not right?
It's toward the back, I had to look for it myself, because I did the same thing.
Yeah.
That and the door are actually additions to the base, they're noted, I don't remember the page, but they are in there.
From day one, that was, was required at the...
And that's what I thought the conversation was.
Yeah, and I, I'll be honest, I haven't looked at this final draft, I have not, but that was part of the original request.
Tyler, you tell us that the concrete and the doors are in this bid of 115?
They're in the one that I read.
Okay, super. That's what really piqued our interest in it.
Yeah, does Cleary do the concrete work in seven hours?
They sub that, they sub it out, okay.
Yes.
Okay, super.
Mr. Chairman, does that have metal liner panel on the inside of that for the wash down here?
I can't tell you, I can't answer.
By the way, it wouldn't do much good to have a drain if we didn't have metal liner panels around.
Um, interior of the building, can you answer that, Brandon?
What's that?
Please come forward.
Come forward.
Additional building components. Can you answer that question about the wash panels on the lower portion of the wall?
Page thirteen of twenty has the concrete.
And the door.
And the door.
My, my question was, Brandon, we were roughing in a floor drain, as I understand, for wash down for vehicles or something, does it have metal liner panel in that room, so that we can in fact do that?
No, the wash down will be, that way we can wash it outside the building, we just want the floor drain in, so if we're pulling...
No, the wash down will be, that way we can wash it outside the building. We just want the floor drain in, so if we're pulling it out when it's raining or snowing, unless, then it's not just puddling up in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I did see in here where it says, if I can find it again.
And here we are. The, it is noted in the additional components.
Yeah, Chris said on page 13.
Yeah.
But somewhere prior, it says that the insulation must be covered with some kind of cover, and it can't be left exposed. Let me see if I can find it again. Was that something that we planned for in here?
I don't know if that's in there or not, that they were gonna cover it.
Side walls and the ceiling will be insulated.
From what I, yeah. Side wall, ceiling will be insulated, from what I understood, they were gonna cover all that as well.
Well, my understanding was it was just a, uh, like that rolled batting insulation that's got a.
With a plastic?
Plastic.
It's on page.
Fassad on it, I believe.
Page four, under, uh, interior finishes, insulation, six inches of fiberglass bat, sidewalls with vapor barrier, cannot be left exposed, must be covered by some type of liner.
Sounds to me like they're not planning on the original, well, I shouldn't say the original, I don't know. At one time, we had called out to have, uh, you know, some kind of a hardboard there, whether it was, uh, it was, I think, five apes that helped both with landing support and the other, so it sounds to me like they just have a, an insulation, and it's not real clear from that. To me, it is, and I, I'm gonna say I will assume, because I won't assume, that it would not be unusual for them to put any metal building insulation with the continuous, um, film on the inside that we would tape, but I don't know. That'd be, that'd be a good question, though, but we, we just need to know, I think, more than anything else, just so that we would know what additional cost we might have to put into it, whether it's included or not, uh, just so that we're aware of it, so.
Well, here it talks about the liner under interior finishes and insulation, PLP prime G90, vertical steel.
That's, that's the structural steel?
That's the structural steel. That's the exterior. Well, it's under interior.
Your liner, PLP prime G90, vertical steel.
Looks to me like we would, we wouldn't.
Need to answer that question for sure, but, uh, Brandon, he didn't talk to you. This is a new guy. This is not the first guy we started.
So that sounds like a liner.
Yeah, it does sound like a liner.
Something got lost in translation there on.
It might have. Uh, I can reach back out to him and.
You know, it'd probably be good to find out, because, uh.
Because if we, if we do need to come up with liner, that's.
Yeah.
An extra expense we'll have to figure in initially.
But I wouldn't imagine that you'd need it more than working high, though.
Yeah.
You know, it is funny, because it's, to me, it sounds like there is a vertical metal liner in there.
Yeah, if you go another three lines down, it addresses a liner.
That's where.
So I wonder if it's just.
Yeah, it does, it does in fact.
Where it's under the internal finishes, that liner.
That makes me think that it is part of it.
You wanna make sure that that's the case?
Yeah, I can do that.
That's what they have, even on page 12 of 20, in the interior liner, they have that same specification list of that PLP prime, G90, and J-trim underneath of their project colors.
Right.
And they have the interior liner listed.
That's what I, when I first looked at it, that's what I took as, that was the liner, but I'm not a construction guy, so.
Neither am I, but that's.
Neither am I.
But I put it in your hands, because I knew you'd know what your finished product needed to look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, here it says.
You did discuss the liner.
Yes, we did.
Yes, okay.
Building interior liner, PLP prime, G90, and J-trim, brilliant. So that does make it sound like it is.
That sounds to me like we got interior lining.
I'm guessing the language on that first portion is simply just part of the, uh, template.
Yeah, maybe.
But we didn't.
And well, and maybe that explains why the liner's included.
We started out what effing this project with a different person, and he's not even left up anymore, so. Just ask for you to clarify that, I can. Yeah, clarify that.
We want to have clarification before we sign this contract.
I would think so. It's only.
Because we're not gonna be building it yet this week.
Not gonna build it this week. We certainly, so that we make sure that that's.
Oh, they could, they could break ground by Friday.
Brandon, you'd probably be disappointed if you couldn't end your year in here and start the next year in here, so.
Very, I would like to have that.
I can do that.
Totally cleared up.
Make sure that the interior is what we want, and it does, does suggest that that's correct, but I don't know the language of that either, as far as what a PLP prime.
That's appropriate. It's always nice to find out before we sign it, isn't it?
Yeah.
So I will send this back to you, Becky. Is that okay? And Brandon, you.
What's that?
Let me just leave it in the.
When you have clarification on that, or even if we need to bring him in to have that discussion, I'll leave that up to you.
Okay.
If you think there's any discrepancy there, make sure that he's here and on the agenda with Becky.
If we're gonna make, yeah, if we're gonna clarify that, there's no reason not to.
Yeah.
Let him answer the technical questions.
I can do that.
Okay, so we will table that. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Brandon.
Can we put that off a couple of times more, maybe, Henry?
Till June?
Alternatively, put it on for next week, and we figure out a time, okay?
And I'll, I'll get hold of him today and verify that, yeah, he could be here Monday or actually Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider terminating the interlocal agreement for ambulance services with Farnham Rural Fire Protection District.
So, fun fact, uh, the Farnham Rural Fire Protection District doesn't actually own or operate the ambulance down there. Yes, I know. I did the same thing when I found out. Uh, the Farnham Village EMS actually owns and operates the ambulances down there. Got a call from their village clerk, who is part of both organizations and the village, straightened me right out on all that. Um, apparently, they've just been making the money work down there, so we are now going to clean this up, much like we do for the Village of Sutherland.
Yeah.
Um, we will cancel the one with the Fire Protection District, and then turn right back around and reauthorize one with the Village of Farnham, uh, or their EMS.
Okay, so we'll take the first one, the, uh, terminating the interlocal agreement with, uh, the, the Rural Fire Protection District first, correct?
Yes. Um, I might've got a little ahead of myself with the second part of that. We can probably just table that, uh, because we have to cancel the other one first, and they get 30 days' notice on that, so the payments won't go out until June or July. So a little time on that.
Okay, so we will, um, take care of the first item today.
Yeah, I thought maybe I should get the board's permission before I start to send in letters canceling interlocals.
Okay, sounds good. Colleagues.
So, Chairman, in light of the fact that we're realigning the funding to the appropriate organization for assistance in the Farnham Fire District, I would move to, to, I would move to terminate the interlocal agreement for ambulance services with the Farnham Rural Fire Protection District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just a note for the record that we intend to, uh, draft the appropriate document to assist the Village of Farnham EMS, Farnham Rescue Squad, to continue that assistance for ambulance services in the future, in the immediate future, so.
And they're all well aware that this is happening, so.
Sounds good. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Flotter?
Aye.
Aye. So that next item will be tabled.
Yes. I wanna triple-check my numbers and make sure it's all right.
Okay, sounds good. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a professional service agreement with Central, West Central Development District, Inc., for the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant Program. This is the Raze Grant Program that we were prized of a couple of weeks ago?
Correct.
Commissioner Brunz, would you wish to address this?
Yeah, so, uh, West Central Nebraska Development District, uh, this board, last week or the week before, memory is escaping me right at the brief second, but, uh, we authorized, uh, working with West Central Nebraska Development District to be, um, to search for grant opportunities and submit an application on behalf of Lincoln County for those grant opportunities, for a, uh, planning and technical assistance grant to uncover potential federal dollars to help us with the consultant, the feasibility study, the environmental study, uh, aspects of a potential multimodal infrastructure project. Um, they have identified the Raze Grant Opportunity. I'm not gonna go through the verbiage again on what that acronym stands for, but, uh, they said that this is the best fit. They're also going to be looking in discussions that we had at our third stakeholder meeting that we had just this last week, um, at the Safe Streets for All program as well. Uh, but the Raze Grant has considerable work. Um, they should be able to just take a lot of the elements, the work that they do for the Raze Grant application, and copy and paste that into, uh, the Safe Streets for All, but, uh, the board did meet. Um, both Michaela Wuller, Commissioner Wuller and I sit on that board. We did abstain from that. Uh, there's some questions with their, West Central's attorney, on, um, probably needing to have another vote, uh, so we have an emergency meeting, because we only had a quorum of four, uh, at, in our meeting, and both Commissioner Wuller and I abstained, and I think the legal counsel for West Central's just wanting to make sure that there's a few more voices weighing in, but it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. We do have this before us, outlines the scope of work at $75 an hour, not to exceed $9,000 for the work that they do on this, um, application process. I would also note that we had, like I said earlier, our third stakeholder meeting of all the interested parties and the different jurisdictions that a potential project may cross through. We went through the merit criteria for the Raze Grant, and overwhelmingly found that we met in high qualification, um, all the elements needed to qualify for this, this opportunity. It's still a very competitive, uh, planning grant, uh, but we're sitting in a good spot as far as hitting, hitting the checkboxes for it, so.
And this grant would be utilized for the permit work?
It's, uh, the consultant.
Feasibility work?
The feasibility study, along with different alternatives. That's important for Commissioner Hughley and I, is to have different alternatives, um, as well as the environmental studies that would go into it as well.
Commissioner Hughley, you have anything to add?
No, sir, I think you held it very well. Thank you.
Okay, so this is an agreement with West Central Development District for them to pursue this grant, the Raze Grant.
The Raze Planning Grant, yes.
The obligation for the county, then, is this $9,000 max.
Max.
For their work.
Correct.
And this had to be completed by February? Is that correct?
The application is due February 28th. We wanna get it in probably a week or two prior to that, uh, but they have a lot of work to do, and they need this, uh, professional service agreement signed between us, really before they get going on any of that application work, and it's a heavy lift, so it's why it's before us today.
And that's this public, uh, professional service agreement that I have in front of me.
Correct.
Tyler, do you have anything to weigh in on that? Is that, have you looked at this agreement?
I have. That thing is ridiculously one-sided in our favor. Tell West Central has no concerns about working with us. Read it through that.
Okay, so you recommend that we proceed with.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, I couldn't have drafted it more in our favor myself.
Okay, colleagues.
Chairman, I would move to authorize your signature regarding a professional services agreement with West Central, West Central Development District Incorporated for the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, otherwise known as Raze, Grant Program.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Carry none. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Flotter?
Aye, great. I'll give this sign. Okay, this goes back to Becky. Okay, uh, any need for a closed session, sir?
Nope.
Great, thank you. There are concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. I said you didn't have donuts in hand, and I figured there's something you wanted to say. And your name is?
Uh, Lincoln County Sheriff Jerome Kramer. I just wanted to, uh.
For my arrest, is it?
Yeah. I just wanted to bring attention to, uh, the situation we had last Friday. Several of us traveled to Lincoln to, uh, watch the governor, Jim Pillen, and Colonel John Bolduc of the Nebraska State Patrol present two officers with, um, the life-saving award and the public servant award. Um, one of those was Trooper Alex Kaufman of the State Patrol, and the other one was our deputy, Tyler Schultz. Um, they responded to an accident up by Hershey where two vehicle accident, one ended up in, in the slough upside down with infants partly submerged, and, uh, those two officers, um, took life-saving measures to save those children. So they got a rather prestigious award from the governor and the colonel, so that was something positive in our negative times, but.
Well deserved.
It was, it was. Congratulations to your son.
Yes.
Raised a good kid. I wouldn't tell just anybody that.
Plus, yeah, I, that's, it's very nice that you bring that in front of us. It had been on social media, and it was really a pleasure to see that, uh, young professionals like that put their safety in harm's way to protect others, and gives you great comfort knowing that we have people like that out there and, uh, putting their lives on the line for our safety.
Yeah, it happens a lot. It's nice when they get recognized, you know, it's a.
Darn right.
This was kind of a special incident, but, uh, you know, quite honestly, every day when they strap on that gun and come in and they never know when something bad's gonna happen, and so it's nice. We have the people we can count on to do that.
Yes, and, uh, for, I hope I get to see the young men, and congratulating myself, please extend, uh, appreciation from this entire board. I think I speak for the board, absolutely. We appreciate your service.
I would, I would echo that. I, you know, Deputy Schultz displayed tremendous courage and didn't even bat an eye, you know, doing what he did, but I know that that's not, uh, that's not an anecdotal characteristic for Deputy Schultz. We got a complete department full of individuals that would step in at a moment's notice and do exactly what he did, so, um, speaks volume for the leadership that they have.
Thank you.
Uh, and the caliber of professionals that we have over there.
Appreciate that.
Okay, better.
Not, not to, uh, and I wanna just affirm what everybody said about Deputy Schultz, a great young man and a great asset to the department. Uh, at the appropriate time, which now is not the appropriate time, and at the appropriate time, I would also like to see our sheriff get some, uh, blades that is well deserved, that not a lot of people know about, and then, as time allows, we'll be able to do that around this table.
Okay.
Great.
And an update on our, uh, guy in the hospital in Lincoln. He was removed from ICU on Sunday. Um, all of his tubes are now removed, except for one in his back. It's just left there for precautionary reasons, in case they would need it for something. Um, he's off of, obviously off of, uh, ID painkillers and on oral painkillers. He's off of, obviously off of ID painkillers and on oral painkillers, and like I said, he's, he's put in a different care unit, so that should reduce the cost some. Security is still on him 24/7, so that bill is getting substantial. It will be a fraction with hospital will be. I talked to the security company this morning. From what they had understood over the weekend, he's probably going to be released sooner than later, so that's encouraging. So once he doesn't have the lines and will get the tube out of his back, I think he'll be something that we can handle in-house with our nursing staff, so.
And that individual would be transported back to North Black?
Yes, that's what my plan is so we can get this expense stopped.
To the comforts of the Lincoln County Detention Center?
We've got a special cell that's equipped for medical needs because all of us were forward-thinking and made that happen, so.
Great. Something comes to mind in regards to these kind of expenses. Do we have any liability insurance that covers this sort of items?
Well, that would have to be answered by our provider, but I would think probably not.
Not? I get a very negative vibe from our county, deputy county attorney.
Certainly not the insurance board pretending to have forgotten more about insurance than I'll let you know, but it's my understanding that there isn't a liability coverage for these sorts of expenses.
Okay. I didn't think there was, but I wanted to ask. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any other elected officials, department heads or their representative? I'll hold that open, and I will open up discussion in regards to Lincoln County Commissioners' Committee reports. Anybody around the table have? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any committee reports, updates before we round out 2023?
Well, Chairman, we, Michaela and I had some conversations with Booker about Joe's question about the preliminary work out here for the generator set, and he essentially was, for lack of a better phrase, probably put off from the contractor, delayed, otherwise inexplicably as that was. Booker didn't voice that request that we get some of that preliminary work done while the weather was good. And of course, with the cold temperatures, I don't know how feasible it will be at this point, how much frost would be, or if it'd even be an issue with a small amount of trenching, but he did, and we did insist that he follow up and put a little pressure on that contractor to see if we couldn't get some of that preliminary work in place as we had requested last fall. We'll see where it goes, but it wasn't for the lack of effort on Booker's part to get it going. Would you agree, Michaela?
I agree.
So we did, we did follow up with that, and we'll see where it goes. I guess we don't know.
Okay. Anyone else?
I believe Chris touched on our meeting with West Central last week. Their office has a lot of really good community projects going. They are wonderful teammates to many communities in this district, and so it was nice to be able to get together with the whole staff, not usually our meetings are just with Amber, who is their executive director. They have some changes coming in their office. It's exciting to see some of her people branch out and go into other areas, and I always look forward to the work that we get to do with them. And that's the only committee meeting I had last week.
Sounds great.
Becky, do you have anything else for us?
I don't.
Tyler?
Thank you. It's always nice not to get phone calls from you. That is exactly right.
Anything else come before the board? Last meeting of 2023. When, do we have a schedule as when we will have our department head reviews and reassignments?
Reorganization meeting? No, we have not talked about that yet.
We talked about a reorganization meeting timeframe yet? When do we normally do that?
We've done it the second week, we've done it the third week, so we could do it January 8th or January 16th.
16th because 15th would be Martin Luther King Day, wouldn't it? Board, what would be your favorite pleasure? 15th, 16th, excuse me?
Probably me.
Or you want to get rid of me by the 8th?
We don't want to do that, do we? I don't, it doesn't matter to me, you want either one.
One more term.
Well, let's go for the 16th then. And how about the department head reviews?
Are you talking about the reappointment?
The reappointments.
Salaries and that.
Personnel committee needs to get Brandon's done.
Post haste?
He needs one for the year. It's got to be turned in and screened to the federal.
Can we do that the first meeting of the year?
We can.
Right after our meeting?
Yeah.
Tyler, in years past, it seems as though we have gone through what salaries would be for those department heads. Seems to me like it would be a good idea to reappoint them and then have that salary discussion subsequent to the reappointment. Is that something that we can do, or is it?
There's absolutely no legal factor in that decision whatsoever.
Okay, so what we will do is we will have those occur on the meeting on the 7th, 8th, excuse me.
You're going to reappoint on the 8th?
Colored, what do you think?
I have no objection to that. My opinion is, decision is much theirs as it is ours. Letting them know what their salary may be in case they want to look elsewhere is something we should probably consider.
That is true, but if we do reappoint them and then set the salary and they don't like it, they can.
That's a true point, too.
But you, you know, you have a valid point, Jerry. I think where we have done it in the past, not necessarily knowing who was going to be in that position, it was awkward, too, so.
I just think from my own experience, if we needed equine abdominal surgery, whether Dr. Brambleage at Rude and Riddle in Lexington was doing it, or me, would make a little bit of a difference.
Put it that way, I guess it makes sense.
Chairman's call.
So we will have the reappointments followed by salary discussion. We will have those separately.
Okay, a week at first, is that what you're saying?
That'd be fine. I don't know why not.
Yeah. Okay.
There will probably be some discussion on this legal paper, too. I know Decline's been in contact with me from the Telegraph and had some discussion, so can you appoint two legal newspapers or just one?
It says a legal newspaper, I believe, in the statute, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't know if that's going to be one of those that works to the exclusion of everything else since it says a. We're really only contemplating the county only having one because why would you need two?
For my election notices, I would like to have some flexibility. Having a weekly paper is going to make things very tight in some instances for a county our size.
That's essentially what we have now.
I don't think, again, I missed.
But you have three days that you can publish legally.
I missed this week of law school, but I don't think there's anything that would preclude you from also advertising in another source.
I halve by law my election laws. It's a legal paper appointed by the county.
Yes, I know it is.
Yeah.
But my point is, oh, I see why you're saying.
If it's a weekly paper, my deadlines are going to be long enough.
You're going to have to publish in two all the time. You can't go back and forth between them.
Yeah, because the public's going to.
And so is there a reason we can't publish it earlier and so that it's in there?
Some, some election deadlines are very close, and for a weekly paper, that deadline.
No, but I mean, don't we know when the elections are going to be?
But all my, Joe, I have notices starting in January through the rest of the year.
It's not just elections.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were talking specifically about elections, you said.
No, my, my notice of election, my sample ballots, my blah, 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 blah.
Plus, plus all the bids.
If it's a weekly paper, I'm not sure how.
Meeting.
Far ahead he needs it to get it in the weekly papers, so I'm saying it can be.
So do you know when those deadlines are now?
Off the top of my head, no.
But it's printed somewhere.
Yes.
Why couldn't a week or two weeks ahead of time you put it in? That's my question to you.
Because some of, like, the deadlines are very close, like 10 days ahead of when it has to be published.
Okay, but.
Because she's going to get specific information that needs to be a part of that posting that she won't know until that moment, right before the deadline.
And sometimes I run very close on deadlines just because there's a lot of cogs, you know.
Pieces of information.
Pieces of information. I'm still trying to get from people that maybe don't.
Plus, plus the bidding process for public purchases and.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I just wondered if I could have some flexibility.
Notice of meetings and all that other stuff.
If I ran into a jam, I'd have some extra days. I mean, for the Telegraph, it's three days, basically, or two. I have it on Wednesday, they can publish it on Saturday.
I will look into it. I don't expect any legal research very much, though. I'm guessing this is an issue of first impression. Because until very recently, papers were at least weekly, if not a daily thing.
It's just starting to become more of an issue, not even with election stuff, other items, too. Sometimes it's like.
Question I have is can we change that mid-year by resolution?
I don't know why we couldn't.
There may be some changes happening in state statute that give us greater flexibility, but that won't be known, obviously, until they take a vote during a short session.
I mean, quite honestly, I do a lot of, there are some things in both papers, and some in my courier that's not my legal newspaper, but certain things that are not as expensive, I do in all three papers. Absentee, you know, different things I've done for years in all three papers.
Different notices require sometimes that it run either in the legal newspaper appointed by the county board or just a paper of general circulation in the county.
Yes. I guess I'm just asking maybe if I could, there'd be some flexibility whether paper you go with, but I didn't know if you could do two. That was my own question.
All right. That's a good point you bring up, though, if you're in one and the next. Well, if it goes in a notification, it goes in a different paper than you've confused it globally.
That's going to be all about it.
Yeah. Sorry, I mean, I've just been trying to think through this one. And I'm going to be honest, sometimes it's a workload, sometimes it's like I got to get this, 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 and this, and then.
So apparently, the statute dictates that it's in a paper, a published paper. I have seen some advertisements and articles about a digital public notice site that's out there. Would it make sense for us to explore?
Nebraska doesn't recognize.
It has to be printed.
Per state statute currently.
That's what's underfoot, and supposedly somebody's going to bring that forth, to bring that element to it, but it's not recognized in Nebraska. But the problem is not just elections. It's just like when we want to get something back on a quick timeframe for a bid, if they don't publish, if we can't get that thing to a daily paper, you know, and have it published two days, three days later, then if you, you know, week drag out, that makes it, instead of a 10-day notice, you're three weeks out at best.
Yeah, and sometimes all the anonymous corrections and different things in it, so it goes back and forth multiple times. That's another, even now, I mean, some of those are very lengthy. So sometimes you just have to allow for corrections and having us time to have time to go through. It doesn't, some of those are really long, so to go through and even proof them, I mean, one reads one, you know, we do it two or three times. It just takes time.
Is there somebody, you know, somebody pirating that?
I mean, we've got to work through it either way.
There's two state senators that are working, yeah, they're working on the language. I think the language is done. I had a few conversations with them. They've asked me for questions.
I just wondered if there was some flexibility. I mean, we never had that happen before, so I just was curious.
So you'll dig into that a little bit and see if we're, what options we have?
I'll see if I can find anything.
They had a session at NACO on the topic, or a part of one of the sessions with legal counsel.
So there must be other county clerks that are dealing with this issue.
I think there are going to be even more as the publications continue to reduce, so.
That's what's driving the conversation.
And, you know, the leading thing on that is a lot of these public, these papers that are going away from daily, they're still digital every day.
Yeah.
There's new material almost every day online with their same organization, so it would make a lot of sense if they would allow that.
It would, I feel.
It'd be cheaper, though, for taxpayers if we could do it on our own county website.
It would be a lot cheaper.
A lot cheaper. Is that, Chris, is that part of the discussion?
It is.
Well, let's hopefully get some action in that regard. Okay, anything else come before the board?
No. Sorry, I brought that up.
No.
Some of the smaller counties have dealt with this for years, but they don't have the volume we do either. I mean, for them, it's not that, as much. They still have to do it, don't get me wrong. It's still something they got to do, but.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, Karen, you're, you're just dying to get out of here and get home, aren't you?
I'm working till 11:00 tonight, so it's a long day.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow. It'd be great to be you.
Have those 14-hour days.
With that in mind, I think we will adjourn at 10:42.